Call to order, the January 27th, 2025, 2025 meeting of the Lake Elmo Planning Commission. At 6:30. First order of business is please rise and we'll say the Pledge of Legions.
My Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next order of business is to approve the agenda from the January, what was the date on that? From our last meeting?
You're approving the agenda for tonight?
Agenda for tonight.
Okay, correct. My bad. I'm approving minutes from January 13th later. Approving the agenda from tonight. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for January 27th.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Dunn, seconded by Commissioner Charz. The next item is to approve the minutes of January 13th.
Mr. Chair, we need a vote on that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
All those in favor?
What's that?
Who will be in favor?
All right. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? It, motion passes. The agenda is approved for tonight. Uh, next item is to approve the minutes for January 13th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
A motion to make an amendment.
Okay. And the amendment would be?
I need to correct the spelling of my last name to C-H-A-R-S on the end. It's indicated three times on the minutes where it needs to be corrected. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Um, I'll move the mo- a motion as amended to add the S to the end of your la- your name and uh, for the minutes of January 13th, 2025.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Motion with amendment passes. Very good. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the Chavez property variances. And we'll get briefed by staff.
Can I just hand out that public comment quick?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the Chavez variances are before you tonight. This item was tabled at your last planning commission meeting. So the applicant for tonight's application is Joe and Joan Chavez. You'll also notice a signature line on the application for GWSA land development or Gagne. They are currently the owners of Outlaw B, that little arm in the northeast corner of the picture. The property is currently an unaddressed parcel, mostly within Sunfish Lake and then Outlaw B within North Star. The property is 11.2 acres, roughly 1.37 acres is over the ordinary high water level mark. The property is currently zoned village low density residential with a shoreline overlay. The property will be receiving access and utilities through North Star Second Edition. Uh, the North Star Second Edition has not yet received city council approval. So you might notice some site work going on out there, but there's no infrastructure installed in the Second Edition or streets built out for the Second Edition. The applicant received a conference of plan amendment and zoning map amendment for approvals to eliminate split zoning in 2024. So regardless of if variances are approved, Outlaw B and this lot will be combined and the city doesn't want split zoning there. So that's why that received approval in 2024. And then past communication, staff has advised the applicant to work with the North Star developer to revise the outlaw shape to minute- to minimize or eliminate the need for variances. The applicant is proceeding with the original outlaw shape. So there are seven variance requests before you tonight. I'll just buzz through those quickly. The first is for the ordinary high water level structure setback for a natural environment lake. The setback is 150 feet for the structure. The applicant is currently proposing 120 feet. The second variance is for structure setbacks from bluff. City code requires 30 feet. They're currently proposing to build within that bluff. The third variance is for principal structure and bluff area, which is currently not permitted. Again, they're proposing to build in the bluff. Uh, the fourth one is for vegetative clearing, which is not permitted in a bluff impact zone or steep slopes. Again, they're proposing that to accommodate for that building footprint and driveway. The fifth and sixth kind of go together relates to creating a lot that, that doesn't need variances. So combining the outlaw with the existing lot, that's a subdivision process and the subdivision needs variances. So that's why you see five and six on there. And then seven is grading in shoreline areas, which is currently not permitted. Again, they would need to do grading to accommodate that building pad. So then I have two schematics of the request before you tonight. The left side is a survey with topography lines and the right side is a slope analysis. The city views deep slopes as 12% over 50 foot span and the city defines bluffs as 18% over a 50 foot span. Um, so just below that slope analysis, you'll see the breakdown of the colors. Moving on to variance criteria, so since we have some new commissioners, I just wanted to provide a little refresher on variance criteria. So their variances have four criteria outlined in state statute that they must meet before they're reviewed for approval. Typically, if, if a variance does not meet all four of those, it should not be found uh, with, for an approval. So I'll run through these criteria. I apologize in advance for the wordy slides. I'll probably just read them verbatim, but the first criteria is practical difficulties. So this criteria is where the strict enforcement of this chapter would cause practical difficulties because of circumstances unique to the individual property under consideration and then only when it is demonstrated that such actions will be keeping with the spirit and intent of the chapter. So staff finds that the practical difficulties criteria is about what is reasonable given the purpose of the ordinance, not what is reasonable to the applicant. The request should be the minimum necessary to achieve the purpose of the ordinance, enjoyment of the parcel in its natural state, building a smaller home, moving the home further from the lake or even using the property as an access to Sunfish Lake or sufficient uses of the property. Staff finds that constructing a large, single family home is not a necessity in this sensitive natural area. Staff finds that practical difficulties is not met. The second variance criteria is unique circumstances. So this is plight of the landowner must be due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner. So staff understands that the applicant have all, the applicants have owned the property for many years and did not create their parcel. While the bluff setback requirements and shoreline overlay restrictions may have not been in place when the property was purchased, any future development is required to adhere to them. In addition, the applicants have the ability to acquire additional property by revising the outlaw shape with a North Star to create a site design that requires minimal or no variances. The applicants may also change location of the house or decrease its size. The applicants have not demonstrated attempts to avoid variances based on the size or placement of the home or attempts to acquire more property. Staff finds that unique circumstances is not met. The third criteria is character of locality. The proposed variance must not alter the essential character of the area. Staff finds that the applicants are proposing to develop their property that is situated within a natural bluff in shoreline area citing that there are existing adjacent residential homes. Staff finds that the existing homes along with the south and west, the existing homes along the south and west were built many years ago, likely under different and less restrictive requirements. Developments on the north and east side of the lake adjacent to this parcel such as Hamlet on Sunfish Lake and North Star were developed to avoid these sensitive areas. This request directly conflicts with the bluff and shoreline regulations that were implemented to protect these sensitive areas. Staff finds that character of locality is not met. And the fourth and final criteria is adjacent properties and traffic. This is that the variance request will not impair negatively impair adjacent properties or increase congestion on a public street. So although no streets or infrastructure are currently in place to accommodate this request, the request would only add one single family home. Given that the request would only consist of one single fa- family home, there should not be an increase in congestion on the public street or negatively impair adjacent property values. Staff finds that adjacent properties and traffic is met. So just to recap, staff finds that one of four of the required criteria are met. And we did send this application out for agency review uh, to different, different departments. On December 2nd, we received a comment back from the landscape architect recommending denial of the request citing concerns with vegetative clearing, grading and erosion in the area. The city engineer also provided a memo recommending denial of the variances citing concerns with the request being premature since none of the infrastructure is in place, which would be the sewer lines, the water lines and the street. Uh, he also provided comments regarding easements that would be required. And then the DNR also provided a memo recommending denial of the request, uh, citing that the request does not meet all four of those criterias outlined in statute and then also concerns with the water quality of the lake. The DD, the watershed provided a comment that a permit would be required. If the commission would like to recommend approval of the request, staff recommends the following conditions. I'll just again go through these quickly. The first is that all necessary permits are obtained. The second is that when utilities are available, the applicant would connect. The third is that a street must be in place before they start construction or issued a building permit. The fourth is that the approval would need to be recorded with the county so any potential buyers aware of the variances. The fifth is that easements are dedicated, outlined in the city engineer's memo. And fifth is that 12 month expiration that is standard for variances. A public hearing was sent to surrounding property owners on January 6th and published in the local paper on January 10th. Because this item was tabled, we, we re-advertised the public hearings. That was again mailed out on January 14th and published on January 17th. We did only receive one public comment ahead of the meeting and that was from Craig, who is one of the owners or managers of Gagne GWSA, signer of the application. He just wanted to get on the record that he is not supporting the current design and encroachment onto his property, but he is indifferent to the outlaw design. And then staff has a recommendation for denial. I can stand for any questions and we do have the applicant here to speak. This is also a public hearing.
Which we haven't opened yet.
What was that?
We haven't opened the public hearing yet. Yeah, that will be happened. All right. Any questions for staff? Before we hear from the applicant?
How long before the sewer and the water will be brought in there? Do we have any idea?
The Second Edition has not yet received city council approval. I believe that's going sometime in February. So as soon as they can get approved plans, um, I'm not sure how far out utilities are contractors. It's, it's hard to say, but I'd say ideally this year at some point.
And then it looks like that Outlaw B will become a part of that other property. So it will be one PID then?
Correct. I believe the applicant speak, can speak to it, but I believe it'll be deeded to them.
Okay.
All right. Let's hear from the applicant. Thank you, Simon. Sophia?
Okay. Uh, my name is Joe Chavez. My wife and I own the parcel that's, uh, we're applying for the variance. And uh, just wanted to say we, I submitted a very detailed response to the issues that uh, the city planner submitted and I'm wondering if you had a chance to read those because they're significant issues. And it really addresses a lot of the issues that were, you know, in regards to why they uh, do not want to approve the variance. And um, if you have any questions, uh, I'd be, I'd be glad to answer them. But really, one thing I wanted to say is that we are not changing the essential character of the locality by any stretch of the imagination. Because when you, if you read through the uh, the detail that we sent, there are homes that are in uh, the Hamlet, the North Star Legacy that are considerably larger than what we're proposing and by a far stretch. And it's only a single family home. And so we wanted to make that clear and that uh, in regards to, to the variance that we're requesting, in essence, we're only looking for 25 feet of uh, for the variance because we're at 120 and currently the regulations are at 150. And so that's in essence, all that we're asking for. And as the city planner noted, you know, all the, the sewer and all that information uh, construction, it's going to go forth probably this year based on the progress that the developers it has made already in phase one. And this is part of phase two. And the other thing I wanted to make note too is that parcel is a lot of record since 1980. And I also made reference to uh, many of the homes because I live on the west side of the lake. Many of the homes are all built on bluffs and steep slopes and they have really not changed the essential character of that entire lake. So uh, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for coming forward. What work have you guys done trying to redesign? What you've got so far to try?
We've done nothing to redesign the original parcel. Zero.
Not the, not the parcel, but what you're calling the footprint of the house?
Basically, it's, it's just a survey in terms of
Okay.
the, the most logical place
Yep.
a footprint of a house can be located on that parcel is on the far northeastern side of the parcel. And that's basically, that's all that we've done in terms of putting that in place and putting all the drainage considerations for culverts and so forth. They're all in place in the surveys that we've submitted.
But there's no construction project
No.
in line. So this is all theoretical, so to speak?
Exactly. Because ultimately, the main purpose is to demonstrate for marketing purposes
Sure.
that this is a buildable lot, period. I realize that no construction can be started until the rest of the infrastructure is completed with water and sewer and so forth uh, in, in the area. And so uh, that's really in essence, what we're trying to prove is that we have a buildable lot from a marketing standpoint. There's no construction that's going to start.
Right.
It starts impossible.
But it's a, so it's a buildable lot of, with a foundation of?
Right, 2,437.
2,400 square feet?
Yes.
And that includes the garage?
Yes.
The 2,400 square foot foundation includes the garage?
Exactly, right.
Okay.
And so we noted that some of the buildings in the Hamlet and the North Star Legacy are anywhere from 3,100 to 4,000 square feet. So in essence, this is almost one of the smallest homes in this particular area. So by no means are we changing the essential character of this area.
Are there any homes on the bluff on the lake on the would be the west, east side of, east side of Sunfish Lake? They're all located, are they all located on the west and southwest?
I believe they'd be all located along the west. I don't believe we've seen a slope analysis to know exactly where the bluffs are, but um, your homes that are going to be closer to the lake are along the west side. The east side is buffered.
Okay.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
Uh, it's on the same order of the question that Chair asked, but um, would you consider putting a smaller footprint in there? This, this is a pretty big footprint that you're trying to build. Um, and I, and I did go in and look uh, at some of the other properties that you mentioned. Is it possible to push that back further to the east and make it a smaller footprint?
Well, based on, based on the surveyor, he's placed it in the most logical place in, in terms of that. And, and again, you know, we're contending that the footprint of the house is small compared to what surrounds us. It's not large. When you think of 3,100 square foot homes that are right next to it in the Hamlet and, and so forth, it's not a large house.
Right. But the other houses aren't on the bluff?
Well, they weren't.
That are being developed behind you?
Right. Because they weren't lots of record because essentially the Hamlet was a farm owned by the Whitmans for many, many years. Okay. And then there was a Shilkin farm that's been owned by them for, for decades as well. So the only other uh, home site on the east side of the lake is on the southernmost portion, which is the old Hillfish uh, house. And that's been there for decades as well. And those, and the, these are the really, the only two lots of record probably in, in the last, you know, decades that exists on the lake. Because everything on the west side of the lake, there are no uh, lots of record really anymore because they've all been taken up with the few homes that are there. And there were never any lots of record on the east side other than this parcel and the Hillfish parcel. Cause they were farms.
Any other questions?
Would it help if I gave you some information in terms of really the footprint of the house? And really what we intend that's possible to change in terms of to be able to accomplish this? Because essentially, we're estimating that only about 28 trees would be removed from the top of that block. Only 28 trees. And below that, there are probably anywhere from 200 to 300 trees that consist of ash trees, oak trees and some birch. Because when we looked at all the requirements and the shoreline requirements, we feel that we meet all those shoreline requirements in terms of impervious surfaces, et cetera, et cetera, that we need to comply with. For example, when you look at the lot size, where the lot meets the outlaw that's, you know, it, that's been platted out, that's 400 and s- uh, 4,000 uh, feet, I believe. And on the shoreline, it's 500 feet. Why? I mean, the lots in the, in, in the North Star are 65 feet and 51 feet. And, and in addition to that, when you look at what's been approved by the city for a North Star, if I'm not mistaken, they've approved three units per acre. This is 1.37 acres that's over uh, the ordinary high watermark. And we're looking at a small footprint of a house compared to what's built around it. So we think that it's consistent with the homes that, that are being built there, especially when you look at the amount of uh, of, of, you know, uh, space that we're taking up.
We didn't allow Gagne to develop any parcels within the bluff area.
Correct. That is required by the DNR to remain natural.
Right.
Now, in, in respect to the developer, now he, he, he made uh, some comments. And it's really related to the drainage on the lake. And basically what we're proposing is that the culvert that crosses the driveway that's contained is platted drainage and a utility easement. And the driveway culvert is a utility. Now that our developer contends that the culvert, uh, driveway culverts are not permitted in drainage and utility easements. And we're also suggesting that we only show the end of the pipe a couple of feet into their lot, which is not going to devalue their lot. In addition to that, uh, the pipe is within the pl- platted drainage and utility easement of the lot. But we're glad, you know, to work with the developer and we'll move it, that two feet off his, uh, off his lot. That's not going to be an issue.
I guess one of my questions is, so it's all proposed. So you're, you're saying you're going to do this stuff, but not, there's no plan to do anything right now?
Well, in, in terms of conveyance, because he's going to have to convey the outlaw to me.
Yep.
And I have to agree to that.
Right.
And so that has to be done. As, as in addition to that, when he conveys the lot, we've already had an agreement that I will finance the stubbing for the sewer portion of the lot as well.
Sure.
And give him an easement so that he can cross the property because his lots are on either side of me.
Right. So staff question, I guess. Variances are issued to the plat- the property, not the plan for the property. Cause my concern is, is this a proposal? But it's still very fluid of what this proposed house would be.
Correct. So six of?
And our variance is then transferable between owners? So if he sells, is, do the new owner have to come forward for a new variance?
They don't unless it expires.
Right.
And then um, the first two variances, the structure setback and the bluff setback, the 30 feet and the 150 feet, those are the only two that have concrete numbers associated with them. Um, so if the plan changes, that variance might need to be modified a little bit. The rest of them are just strictly not permitted and they're proposing it. So whether the site plan is tweaked a little bit, it might not impact those variances.
Now, we clearly understand that this is only in effect for a 12 month period. And we're anticipating that within that 12 month period, most of that infrastructure will probably be in place in the North Star Second Development. Based on, on the rapid speed that they're doing it right now, I think there's probably, let's see, two, three, uh, at least four houses that are under construction now. And there are foundations being dug up for at least two more houses.
All within phase one?
Within phase one.
Yeah.
So we suspect that within that 12 month period, they will clearly have that infrastructure in place. And e- even if they don't, that's fine because if it's sold, that another, the, the next owner will have to come before you again and propose the variance as well.
All right. Any other questions? Will we open the public hearing?
I guess I'd be curious, what are those 28 trees that you think you need to take out?
Well, those trees really relate in terms of really putting the house print right there. That's what we're going to have to clear.
Are they buckthorn? What, what, what are you taking out that you need to?
Well, there's, there's probably some oak trees there and ash trees. Because essentially, if you were able to uh, visit that site, it's at the top. You wouldn't even see the house being uh, built because there's so much wooded area below it that you wouldn't even see the house.
You're saying from the water, you wouldn't see it?
From the water, exactly.
You can see it from the park? Can you see it from your house?
It's debatable because even some of the houses that are in uh, the North Star Legacy and the Hamlet, we can see through the trees. We can see those houses. We can see even the uh, the old Shilkin barn from our house. But we feel that like, you know, I think the, the strong point that we want to make is that it's not changing the essential character of the locality, which I think was a prime concern for the city. And we're only asking for that 25 foot variance that we think is reasonable, you know, to be able to accommodate us, uh, to cure this, this issue, to work with the city to, to cure this issue. Because we didn't generate the problem. We didn't change the configuration of the outlaw or in, or the parcel or the outlaw because the developer proposed the outlaw.
Is this a property that you've been holding because you thought you were going to develop it down the road or, I mean?
Well, it was, it was, we were holding this, we, we acquired the property in 1993. And so this has been a landlocked piece of property. And so over the last 23 years, we have been before the planning commission, the city council to get some sort of access. Now, in terms of acquiring land, which we spelled out in the detail there, we have personally approached the Shilkin family to acquire more land years ago before the North, before the Hamlet went in. We were denied. We were denied easements to go into the Hamlet, uh, from the Hamlet. We were denied an easement and I have the letter from the Shilkin attorney that denied us the easement as well to, to connect to the legacy. So it's, it's been a challenge, but now we're at the point where we have an access point. We feel that we meet generally all the requirements except for that setback of the 25 feet.
All right. Should we open the public hearing? Need a motion?
I move to open the public hearing.
One second.
All right. Do we need to vote for that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passed. We will open the public hearing. We will open the public hearing at 6:57. If you'd like to come up and speak, I've got two individuals right now. No, that will give you six minutes, and in about a minute out, I'll give you the signal that it's cutting short. We're here to listen, and here we have to say, but there generally isn't feedback given back and forth.
Thank you.
Your name and your address, please.
Yep. Bill Fredericks. I'm at 3691 Kelvin Avenue North. I'm a neighbor of Joni and Joe, and I didn't get the letter, so I, well, I happened to stop over there to borrow a tool the other day, and he had mentioned this, and he was talking to me about the setback, and I said, "Well, we're on the west side of the lake, and we had the same issue back in 1993, where we were trying to build, and we needed a variance for the setback, which we were approved." So I was just like, "Well, I don't know what the situation is any different, but I know we were provided that variance in the past, so I just thought I should share that with you, that has been approved for others." So I guess that's what I wanted to make sure you're aware of and heard, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? The only other public, that was the only one I had was Bill for this. And with that, we'll, 6:59, we'll close the public hearing.
Motion.
Oh, need a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion from Dunn, seconded by Charz. Public hearing's closed. Do we have any other questions for staff?
We do have a couple of comments.
Well, we can comment, or we can make a recommendation to move forward.
Can do questions now? We'll need, for discussion, you'll need a motion.
Yep.
Okay, so questions back to Sophia here.
I've got a question. I know Bill called up and just said that he had a variance from 1993, but I know some of these bluff and setback ordinance have been after that. And I just wanted to make sure people were aware that there were different rules at different times, and I had the opportunity to be working with the Chavez family before and different things, and I know this has been on their list of trying to go through for a long, long time. The Department of Natural Resources letter really sent it out to me on a lot of the concerns that they had for the request, and seven variances. That was just my comment, was the, I don't know exactly when these other shoreline variances came in, but if we didn't have them now, the south end of Lake Elmo would probably be all clear cut and have homes there on, by Lake Elmo Avenue, if we didn't, if Department of Natural Resources didn't have some of these variances to kind of save and have these buffer areas, which were really important.
Was there a question in there? Do you want us to make a motion so that we can then have comments?
Yeah. I don't know if I'm able to get an answer from Bill there, but what was your address there again, Bill?
It's 3691.
3691 Kelvin.
Okay, so you're kind of, you're the furthest to the north there.
Yeah, border though.
Are you able to describe your lot to me?
I have a...
Is that possible, or no? Chair? Okay. All right. Okay.
Go ahead.
I don't know if Sophia knows.
Would you like me to make the recommendation that's on the screen right now, so that we can do the discussion then?
Any motion you'd like.
Any motion is acceptable.
I move to recommend denial of all of the seven shoreline variance requests from Joe and Joan Chavez for the property located at 14.029.21.24.0004 and Outlot B of North Star First Edition, based on the findings listed in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Dunn. All right, discussion?
Now we can discuss.
Yes.
Sorry. I guess I was just curious about...
Can I start with Commissioner Bowley, because she...
Oh, because I...
Okay, sorry.
She didn't make the motion.
Can I see the screen that had the DNR and the DNR comments and the...
The DNR comments or the agency review?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, when I look at something like this, first of all, I am concerned about the fact that by continually making variances and continually allowing this to happen, it's just going to keep going and going and going. And when the DNR makes a comment where it's concerns with the variances impacts the natural area, including the lake and the water quality of the lake, that to me is like a big red flag. I have to look at the DNR as a professional body and look to their recommendations, and when it says something like that, that's a red flag for me.
Commissioner Dunn?
For myself, when I was going through the DNR, I went through everything, and in a way, it was nice, because we had two weeks to go over through things.
Twice.
So I went over it, and I yellow-aligned everything and questions and so on, and what popped out to me is a decision to approve the variance would be arbitrary and capricious. The DNR recommends denial, and those words always really hit me, kind of, as something we didn't want to get into.
Now, we know how to get under your skin.
You don't want to get under my skin.
Arbitrations and capricious. Yeah, all right. Thank you.
But I guess, I know that everybody's working really hard to do things, but that was my primary one.
Yeah, I guess my comments would be, I mean, I feel like there's seven things here that we're asking for a variance on. It's not like we're just asking for the one item of 25 feet additional. There are four of them there that are not even permitted, that are being proposed. That just makes it more complicated, I think.
I agree. It's complicated, because I think the homeowner has rights, the proprietor has rights, and it's, how do we make it so that if they did want to build, that they could? Is that possible? And my, part of my frustration is I don't feel like there was a lot of attempt to come back and say, "Okay, what if we did something different here?" It's, here's the set plan that we're rolling with, so it doesn't feel like there was a lot of give and take. There wasn't a lot of give and take going on. But I, again, get back to homeowner has rights. How do we make this a buildable parcel? Why is it a parcel if it's not buildable? It's a tough piece of land to deal with. So that's where I believe I'm at.
I also worry that then whoever does decide to build on it will come back again and keep asking, you know, because you don't know what the eventual...
Right.
...property is going to look like.
Right. I mean, we're always open to hear variances, but I think there needs to be more in place. I feel like it's somewhat premature in what might go there versus what the true plan is to go there.
I'll have another comment, too. I think when you're looking at the homes that are up in Hamlet, you're taking a total square foot approach to that versus a footprint. So when I went in and looked at the footprints of the homes that are on the west side of the lake, yours is approximately 1968 square foot footprint. The next largest one over there is 2253, the Olsons' property. Then there's, and I'm not going to, I'm going to kill their name here, is it Bean Ben? I'm not sure. They have a 780 square foot house. I would be more open to looking at something that had a smaller footprint that could be maybe pushed back further to the east on that lot, where it's not encroaching as much on the sloped areas, and maybe you don't need as many variances on it. Then I go on to the properties that are on the south side of the lake. We have, well, Fredericks, 1,100 footprint, it says, on the tax record, and then on the south side of the lake there...
You call it the address, that makes, that's more applicable.
Yeah. 10472 Stillwater Lane North, Olson. There's an old house, but that's a 740 square foot footprint. That'd be more, you know, you can still get a walkout basement and a two-story home there, and you can get the square footage up, but, I mean, I just, I'm struggling a bit with the idea that a 2,400 square foot foundation is common. That's a big property, and if you finish all three levels, that's really a giant house. And yep, they have some of those over in Hamlet, but they're pushed back. They're not right sitting on the bluff. So I guess I would like to have seen some additional rendering or possibilities for a smaller footprint setback further.
All right. Anything else?
Can I respond to it?
Sure.
You know, we specifically looked at the shoreline requirements for the lot, and it complies with the, all the shoreline classifications for Chapter 6120. Like in the parcels, 11.2 acres, and the house footprint would be in the 1.37 acres above the ordinary high water level. Now, the minimum lot width for sewer lots is 125 feet. We have a width of 28 feet on the outlot, and then on our lot, it's 4,237 feet, along with 550 square feet at the shoreline. And so, you know, in terms of, we haven't done anything, it's like, we were handed by the developer, here is the outlot. This is the access point, because it's a landlocked parcel. And because it's a landlocked parcel, you know, we can demand access, you know, to work with the city in order to open this lot up, because it is, it qualifies under those particular regulations, that it's, you know, it falls within those regulations. And so from that standpoint, and I guess I don't agree in terms of some of the comments that are made about the houses there and why it's so big. Well, size is not really in terms of a guidance, in terms of what someone could eventually build in terms of a house, unless you can point to a certain criteria or regulation that says, "This square footage is no longer permitted within the city of Lake Elmo." I don't understand that part of it, where someone says the house is too big, or the house is too small. And if you look, maybe if I can, maybe move to the, I don't know if I can move to the, there we go, into the surveyor, the house is at the furthest northeastern corner that it can be placed. There isn't a better location for a footprint in that house, according to the surveyor. It's not a design choice to put the house in that location. It's the only logical place it can go. So someone cannot come back later on and say, "Well, we're going to move a footprint of the house over here, over there." It's not going to work because of drainage and slope. This is the best location for a home.
All right. There's a motion on the table. Can you pull that back up, Sophia?
Sorry about that.
Any other discussion? All right. The motion was to move to recommend denial. Do you need any factor findings from us?
If you're following staff's recommendations, you're just using those findings that I presented.
Okay, very good. What's that?
If you say aye, it means you deny it, not nay.
Yes, correct. Yeah, right. Right. So the...
Never done this before.
The motion is denial. So all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The motion to recommend denial has been passed. So this does go to the city, so...
Well, this is slated for City Council, February 4th.
Okay, so there's an opportunity there. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number two. I'm sorry, it's not item number two, but next on the agenda.
4B.
4B, thank you, is the zoning text amendment.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So before you tonight is a housekeeping amendment bundle from 2024. This is typically done annually. Staff keeps tabs throughout the year on items that have minor issues that come up or instances that we need to review. So that is, before you tonight, there are seven sections. Again, these are typically minor changes, not really making policy decisions, just cleaning up. So I will run through all seven of those sections, and I would say maybe questions at the end or comments. So just noting, underlined red text is proposed added language. Red, strike-through text is proposed existing languages that we are looking to remove. So I'll go through section by section. The first section we are proposing to amend is the bed and breakfast definition. We're looking to clarify this consistent with our current practices. Bed and breakfast, we're proposing to add language for short-term rental. There's existing text in here that says limited to 30 days, short-term rental is 30 days. That's why we're proposing that amendment. We are proposing to strike owner occupied and replace that with the owner may or may not reside on site, to follow current practices. We don't currently do inspections to confirm occupancy for bed and breakfast. The second code section is to the open space definition, where we are proposing to strike natural features and replace that with, including wetlands, stormwater ponds, steep slopes, parks, and conservation areas. This definition is more in line with what Met Council has. And then we are proposing to add, or sidewalks, since trails and sidewalks are both pedestrian pathways. And then we are proposing to add, and outlots, buildable outlots, so a developer can't count a future buildable outlot towards their open space, since it would be built out. The next section is to off-street parking regulations. So the italicized text is the current title of the section, but if you read further, and it really doesn't talk about trucks. So we're proposing to add language, or truck which has a vehicle weight of 14,000 pounds, which is a class four or more. We want to take into consideration those residents that might drive company vehicles home, company pickup trucks or cars. So we still want to allow that, but we don't really want to see semi-trucks or the big UPS box trucks in residential areas. That's why we made the divide at class four. And then because we just talked about trucks, we removed and pickups from the exempt section. And our next section we're proposing to amend is accessory buildings and structures. So we've had some issues with accessory structures in front yards, which is currently not permitted. So we just really want to drive that language home. So we are adding, or structures, since accessory buildings or structures both count here. And then we're adding the following language. "And located in the side or rear of the principal structure, accessory buildings or structures shall not be located in the front yard of a principal structure unless they are listed as a permitted encroachment in Section 10512200," and we'll go through that section next. But again, we're just with this, we're trying to reinforce no structures in the front yard. The next amendment is to the permitted encroachment section. So we've had some issues in developments where they have drainage issues, and the easiest way to resolve that is by putting a retaining wall there instead of masquerading the site over. So we are proposing to add, as a permitted encroachment in required yards, retaining walls less than four feet in height. And then inside and rear yards, pool equipment pads. So this is those smaller, more dense developments. They have a 50-foot pool equipment pad requirement from neighboring houses. So they have an issue meeting that setback, that setback due to the yard setback. So if we can allow it in setbacks, it'll help them put it further away from the houses. And then I do just want to clarify that both of these amendments are to required yard setbacks, not within easements. So you're still not allowed to put anything in an easement. The next section is to lot line adjustments. Again, this is following our current practice. So we would be adding the language, "When more than one non-conforming, when more than one lot is non-conforming, the least conforming lot may be made more conforming while the other non-conforming lot is made less conforming. A conforming lot shall not become non-conforming by the lot line adjustment slash consolidation process." Just to kind of give that an example, if the zoning district is a 10-acre minimum, and there's a property with 10 acres and a property with two acres, you cannot do six and six, because that would make the 10-acre parcel non-conforming.
Non-conforming.
This would apply if you were in a 10-acre zoning district, and for some reason, there's two 1-acre lots. They can shift that property line between them, because under no circumstances is either of these 1-acre lots going to become 10 acres.
Sure.
It was kind of confusing language. I hope the example helps.
Yeah.
And the last section is to be consistent with what I had just laid out, and that would be if the existing lot is less than the minimum required, it may be further reduced if it meets the lot line adjustment standards of the section we just talked about. And so I'm pulling from the staff report. A public hearing was sent out to the paper on January 17th. We actually did receive one public comment, which has been shared before you by Joyce Kelch. She provides comments regarding B and Bs should be, there should be a homestead requirement, and then ag buildings should be... and then ag buildings should be spaced 40 feet. So with that, I can stand for any questions, and we can talk about any amendments. I do have a motion.
Any questions for staff?
I have a question. Could you just talk a little bit more about the off-street parking? So you took the, from recreation vehicles and pickups off of that they're not restricted, restricted, and then you moved the trucks up above. Was it just smaller pickups then, and you just felt like they didn't need to be addressed if they had identification on them? Those are permitted?
The title of the section is Truck Parking in Residential Areas, and then the section doesn't talk about trucks until an exception. So it didn't really make sense the way it was currently written. Assuming the title of this was correct, it should talk about trucks in there. And so then we made that divide at class four to account for those, maybe those pickups or those smaller cars that contractors might drive home.
And somewhere else in code, there's something that addresses rural properties?
Yes.
Could you share that, please?
10512680 talks about accessory uses, and that includes trailer parking, truck parking in rural areas.
Lots allowed?
Yes.
Sure, we want to hold the public hearing, we want a motion, public, open the public hearing?
Sure. I move to open the public hearing.
Seconded.
Seconded, all right, we'll open the public hearing on 4B at 7:19.
Want to vote on it?
Oh, I need a vote, correct. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, open the public hearing at 7:19. We do have one person, Mel.
Suck it to us, Mel.
Come up.
She sent an email. Joan Zertman, where is it, it's not on the board?
I'm sorry?
Joan Zertman sent an email.
Yep, we have that, I believe that's...
That was from Joyce.
Do we have it from Joyce?
That's something else.
Yeah.
I received an email from Joyce, I have not received an email from Joan.
From anyone else, okay.
Correct.
She said twice that she tried to send that.
All right, if you can start with your name and your address, it'd be great.
Mel Eater at 4890 Keats Avenue North. First I'd like to bring up the topic about using the Stillwater Gazette. Do we know how many people in Lake Elmo subscribe to the Stillwater Gazette to find out the information that the city is presenting at these public meetings? And what percentage is that of the total number of people that households in Lake Elmo? I mean, I think we need, might have to look at a different form of getting the information out to the people of Lake Elmo. I mean, if the number is way low, then you might as well just throw it in the wastebasket because you're not reaching the people about what's happening in Lake Elmo that they have concern about. So, you know, what we did in the 60s, that doesn't ain't going to work in the 2025.
Acknowledged, and we're not here to answer questions, but staff is here, and is the communications director, our new communications specialist, so...
Yeah. So hopefully we can find a new method of informing people what's going on in Lake Elmo. And what was in that newspaper article? Because I looked at the agenda out on the city email that I get from the city, and it said zoning amendment, housekeeping items. Well, geez, I thought you were talking about the Mary makes, you're talking about regulations for the caretakers. Couldn't you have a little more information about what you're really talking about? Or at least bullet points underneath the heading of what you're talking about? Otherwise, because I look at what's in that agenda, determine if I should go down and look at what's being talked at the meeting. If there's not something that doesn't seem to pertain to me, then I don't waste my time looking at that information that you people get. So I would think that a better description, you're really talking about rental, not really housekeeping, like people coming in and taking care of disabled people's homes. So I don't know why it wouldn't say zoning text amendment, rental items or something like that, housekeeping items, that's pretty vague. It's almost like you don't know what people, what you're talking about. And I read the letter, email from Joan Zertman, and I have a problem where it says bed and breakfast, short-term rental. She said that's two different things, and it has two different requirements, especially when it comes to the state. So why are we having, calling bed and breakfast, short-term rentals? If it's supposed to be two different things and has different requirements, if somebody takes it as short-term rental, but it's really a bed and breakfast, and something happens and we didn't meet the requirements for short-term rental that the state requires, we'll all become liable. So I think you have to break out bed and breakfast from short-term rental.
Two different things.
That's the only problem I see, one of the main problems here. A lot of other stuff, that's, that's beyond me. So I think we need to clarify that. And I, even though I prefer, you know, I know a guy that lived in Tapestry, and he rented, rents homes every once in a while. He sold his house in Tapestry, and he rented a home in Stillwater, and then he bought a home in Woodbury. Now he told me he stole the home in Woodbury, and now his family's renting a home in Woodbury again, and looking for another house. So people have different expectations, you know? Some people live a long time in one spot, like I do, and other people don't, they move around. So this kind of bothers me that we're allowing short-term type rental in a residential area. And we know from these other rental units out there that we have problems with parties and everything that goes on. So we have to make sure that when we classify things, that we classify them the right, and not soon that us make a bed and breakfast a short-term rental. Make them separate and follow the guidelines that the state recommends for short-term versus a bed and breakfast. So that's all I got to say.
Great, I appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Any other public comments?
No. I didn't receive the email from Joan. If one of you did and wanted to read it?
I have it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, okay, so Joan Zertman sent in, I can see that she's addressed it to the city. She just tagged me on it. It says, hello, I'd like to voice my opinion to adding language that allows B and B, and she's abbreviating S-T-H-R, to not be owner occupied. First, bed and breakfasts by their very nature are always owner occupied. A short-term rental is a very different animal than a, than a bed and breakfast. The state has put very strict criteria into the state building code when a small, when a short-term rental is not owner occupied. When not owner occupied, it becomes commercial property, and there are very strict life safety rules for this transient property. If not owner occupied, the property needs to be fully accessible. If non-owner occupied, short-term rental is going to be allowed, they should be licensed for this reason and for the safety of the people that stay in them. Stillwater and most other cities that allow short-term rentals have very strict rules governing them and have a licensing program. In Stillwater, the number of short-term rentals is limited to 50 outside of downtown area. When a short-term rental is converted to a single-family home, is converted from a single-family home to a short-term rental, it becomes commercial property. The building official and fire marshal are required to do all full, to do full inspection, and a new certificate of occupancy is required, required to be issued as it is a complete change of use. I don't think that just adding short-term rental as an allowed use is a good idea, as there are all kinds of things to consider. It is in no way, shape, or form the same as a bed and breakfast. Bed and breakfast are becoming a thing of the past, and short-term rentals are replacing them. If you're going to learn, allow short-term rentals, it needs to be evaluated at a much larger scale. And Stillwater has become a problem as people are wanting to buy up the affordable properties and convert them to commercial short-term rentals for profit. Too many affordable houses, homes are being taken out of the housing stock. Please do not add short-term rental, non-owner occupied, to the code. Joan Zertman.
Thank you.
Any other immediate questions for staff?
Make a motion to close the public...
No, you're right, thank you. I was doing that before, and I got shut down.
Do you want this other one read into the record?
I would like mine as well.
You're more than welcome, we can read that in the public record if you'd like to.
Both of them read it, the one from...
The emailed one is in the...
Already is there.
The Google Drive, you can read it if you'd like.
From Keats, it's from Joyce.
Sure.
Yeah, it's published.
Here are my comments to the Lake Elmo Planning Committee, Monday, January 27th at 6:30 PM. Agenda, annual housekeeping zoning text amendment, 4B. B and B residents should be classified as homesteaded. Both current listings are short-term rentals. Number two, with six-foot distance from ag buildings, this is too close to a house. Recommended distance is 40 feet. Regards, Joyce Kelch on Keats.
Thank you, Joyce, and then Commissioner, you had...
For discussion.
For discussion, all right. Need a motion to close a public hearing? If that's...
Motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
Seconded by a motion from Commissioner Dunn, seconded by Commissioner Bowler. The public meeting is closed at 7:29.
Can you vote on that one, too?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Vote, it seems so, it's tough when you have four people. I'm sorry, we need a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now the public meeting is closed, public hearing is closed. Jeez. All right.
We have to make a motion before we can have discussion.
Motion, and then discussion.
Okay. I'll second that.
All right.
Oh, no, I did not make a motion.
I'm sorry, do we have a motion for discussion? We need a motion for...
Motion to recommend approval of the proposed text amendments as presented by staff.
We can have, we have to have a motion first, and then we'll discuss.
Now we'll discuss the motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. And it's seconded by Commissioner Char, just, Charz.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Charz, with an S.
Yes, that's all right. My name was slaughtered for three years, so, yeah, it's all good. I'm used to it. With that, I know you have comments.
Yeah, so my specific comments are relating to the zoning use types and classifications, use types and classifications, accessory uses, bed and breakfast, short-term rental. The, the proposed language, short-term, bed and breakfast, short-term rental means private property, and you're proposing to remove the owner occupied residence that contains no more than five guest rooms, where lodging with or without meals is provided for compensation. Guests stay shall be limited 30 days, and you're adding, proposing to add, the owner may or may not reside on site. My thoughts, comments, and concerns are, the proposed language is not in the best interest of Lake Elmo residents. It's not, it's not, it's nothing, if not replace, ah, if nothing replaces owner occupied, a bed and breakfast can be any private residence. A private residence means it's not public. We need a word to define the owner of the bed and breakfast. For the current context, the property is a principal primary residence, registered homestead with Washington County State Tax Services. We want the owner of the property to remain defined and accountable. In order to prevent unintended consequences, specific language must be included. Owner occupied is synonymous with homestead, and if removed from the current text, it completely changes the type of ownership that qualifies for a bed and breakfast. We don't necessarily want to lose the meaning, but rather fix any ambiguity in the definition. Will the proposed language provide the desired result? Not in this instance. Is the city's intention to have investors eating up private residence in the community housing stock and turning around to offer short-term rentals? I don't think, I, I wouldn't think, I would think not. Does the city want to promote homeownership in the community? Certainly. We already have a housing shortage. Residents don't want investor-owned short-term rentals popping up in their backyards. I'm afraid the proposed language will create problems for the city and residents. The city may wish to define other types of short-term rental housing. If non-homestead owners want to offer short-term rentals, different requirements must apply along with licensing, regulations, fees, and taxes. In these instances, a CUP or IUP may be appropriate, as well as designation in approved zones only. Multi-unit housing and apartment complexes designed for short-term rental and long-term rentals will benefit a segment of our housing, housing needs. I recommend they be restricted to specified zones. Current, consider including non-homesteaded private residences in the village, commercial and mixed-use areas for short-term rentals. Future and existing housing inventory that offers walkability to local businesses in the village and that exist along transportation corridors and commercial and commerce areas will be a benefit to the community and support sustainability. This investor-owned segment of housing is identified and taxed differently. Health and safety standards, along with accessibility, anti-discrimination laws, and governing applications, amongst other things, apply. I recommend this segment of short-term rental housing be considered separately from the proposed language amendment. Residents and buyers looking to move into our community want stability, safety, and predictability. Housing statistics show rentals can be a detrimental, can have a detrimental effect on area property values. Many HOAs have allowed rentals, don't allow rentals in their associations, and insurance companies code them as more risky. Real estate owners who purchase a private residence as their homestead respect and treat a property, property different than, than tenants. Short-term rentals are considered transient and are disruptive. If the owner has never lived on the property in our community or is an out-of-state investor, LLC, or other entity designed to hold housing inventory, they are not invested in our community in the same way our resident, in the same way as our residents. The resident with whom I've spoken, the residents with whom I've spoken believe short-term rental properties owned by these entities should not be randomly allowed throughout the city in every neighborhood and in all zones. My recommendation is to follow, is as follows. Non-homestead housing should not be allowed as short-term rentals without further review requirements, licensing, and authority of the city. Other surrounding communities have separate guidelines for these types of short-term rentals that Lake Elmo may want to consider reviewing. Thank you for your consideration.
I agree. I think we've got to pull that out and define that separately, the difference between a bed and breakfast and a short-term rental, and I don't think you can, we can group them together. Anyone else? Any other comments on the rest of the text amendments?
I think that's a good delineation of one versus the other. You know, I kind of thought in my life, have I gone to, you know, a bed and breakfast? Have I gone to a short-term rental? You know, and they're altogether different.
Right.
So...
Do we want to pull it out, or do we want to make an amendment to it?
You can, you can, we can vote on the proposed, or we can, we can amend the, you can amend the recommendation of the motion right now.
I propose, I would like to make a proposal to make an amendment.
Which is?
I'd like to language to say, bed and breakfast, short-term rental means a private owner occupied residence that contains no more than five guest rooms, where lodging with or without meals is provided for compensation. Guests stays may be limit, shall be limited to 30 days. The owner may or may not reside on the site. So basically, leaving owner occupied in there for the time being, and then later on, we can bring up a separate... And taking out short-term rentals.
We've got a conflict there where we say owner occupied, the minimum we're keeping in, the owner may or may not reside on site.
Owner occupied is synonymous with, with homestead.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying there's a conflict there. The owner occupied, but then at the end, the last sentence, the, of the change says the owner may or may not reside on site.
I think that's okay as, if it's primary residence. But I mean, that's just my amendment I'm proposing.
No, and I agree. I'm just saying they contradict, they contradict, these two statements contradict each other. So one of them, if one of them comes back, the other one needs to go out.
Then we should table it and we should change the language for both of them.
If I could make.
Can I make a recommendation really quick?
Please.
Since this is housekeeping, it was supposed to be something to clarify policy. Is to just, the amendment would just keep it the same as is.
Keep it the same.
Since this is housekeeping, anything that is related to short-term rental should really be considered as its own agenda item.
Correct. All right.
Can I ask one other question of you, Sophia? The other email that we received, the six-foot distance from the agricultural building, should we take a peek at that one, too, as long as we're doing this?
Should be 40 feet. So let me pull that up here.
It's sort of hard to understand what exactly the deal is.
Six feet is currently in code. That's, I believe that's related to building codes. We're not amending, changing six to anything.
Thank you for going back through that. I couldn't remember that one, so thank you. Okay, so then do I move to?
We have a friendly amendment on the table. It doesn't have a second.
So can I?
The amendment to.
I'll withdraw it.
Okay.
Okay.
So right now, we're at staff's recommendation. You can either vote on that, deny it, and then make a new motion that would remove housekeeping. Or you can amend the motion that's already out there. It might be cleaner to just vote on the existing one and start fresh.
All right. Let's vote on the existing amendment on the table. Motion on the table. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Motion fails. Do we have a new motion or on the table?
Can you guide me if I try this? Can you guide me?
Yep.
I move to recommend approval of the proposed text amendments as presented by staff with the change of the bed and breakfast, leaving it as originally worded.
So no change to code section 105, 12, 110, B13?
Did I do that okay?
Perfect.
I'll second.
Second. All right. Any discussion? Additional discussion?
That's nice.
And with that?
Vote.
Let's have a vote. All in favor? Of the proposed amendment changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on and down the list. Thank you, staff. We are new and finished business. There is none that I'm aware of. And then we go to communication updates, city council updates.
There have been no planning commission applications that have been reviewed by city council between now and your last meeting.
Who wants to join the fun? I can't believe it.
And then upcoming meetings, February 10th and March 24th are your regular planning commission meetings. And then I forgot to put on here, February 11th is your joint planning commission, city council workshop. That's at 6:30.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I know we have some communications from the commission.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
What's the paper today and Met Council chair is going to be.
Susie, are you muted by chance?
Pardon?
Are you muted? It's hard to hear you.
Okay. Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay, there we go. The Met Council is going to deliver their annual state of the region address on Thursday. And I just think it's something to be aware of. The new part is Imagine 2050 Regional Development Plan. So buckle up and get ready. Just be aware that that's going to be this Thursday. And I won't be here for whenever this comes to us, but just please be aware.
We'll watch for it.
You'll be with us still.
Well.
You'll be helping from another spot. You'll be looking over.
And with that, our agenda is complete. Do we have a motion? We need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
I don't need to? Really?
Really?
I gotta be like that? All right, we're adjourning the meeting at 7:41.
All right.
No, you don't want to.
I'm like a little kid.